That is nice. It's technically my clocks.
Sometimes those for the moment surprise things are some of the best, you know?
Shall we?
Yes.
All right. Adrian N. Brightfelder, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, September 20th at 5:00 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting work sessions on the Project Hope Quarterly Update and the Dubuque Regional Airport Master Plan.
Good evening, and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for September 20th, 2021. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the work session is as follows. Mayor Buell. All right, not hearing him, I'll move on. Mayor Protem Sprank.
Here.
Councilmembers Kavanaugh.
Here.
Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
All right, so our second work session is the Dubuque Regional Airport Master Plan, and I will turn it over to Todd Dalsing.
Thank you, Adrian. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Todd Dalsing, Dubuque Regional Airport. And before we get started, I'd like to recognize we've got Doug Brotherdin, one of our airport commissioners, is with us tonight, and the others will be either watching online or watching the recording. I'd also like to recognize Cheryl Sheldon, our airport accountant. So, tonight, I'm going to introduce Mike Demetrio to my left. He's with Kaufman &amp; Associates, and he was chosen, or their firm was chosen, to update our airport master plan. So he's going to give us a presentation, then after that presentation, we'll be happy to answer any questions, or discussion, or comments. With that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Todd. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to present our draft final findings of the airport's master plan update, which is basically a document that needs to be updated about every 10 years for the type of airport that you do have. And we've spent the better part of the last two working on this project, partly because it generally lasts about a year, and partly because of a little thing called COVID that got in the way about halfway through this process. And so we had to take a break, a break, and then resume at a later point in time. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and get started. I would like to keep this at about 30,000 feet, give you enough detail to allow you to ask the questions that you would like to of me. If you do have a question during this presentation, please don't hesitate to stop me. I'd love to answer it at that point. This is, this document, this process, is very detailed. The document itself is several hundred pages long, so there's a lot of information in here. And again, I'm going to try to keep it to that is, that which is the most pertinent. And... There we go. As far as your background, you, your airport is a commercial service airport as designated by the FAA. What that basically means is that your highest use is that to serve the general public's movements from ground to air to other communities in support of interstate commerce. And so with that process, you were served by an airline, and you were also served by general aviation. I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm going to step back and say, as far as the airport's master plan, it is, again, a process that the FAA would like you to undertake at about every 10 years. That process is very linear, is a very logically placed process, which starts with an identification of what you have to basically a finding of what you need. And the process itself lends itself to be open to the community, to allow for public feedback, to allow for interactions, to allow for collaborations. And so from the beginning, we put together a technical advisory committee, which was our sounding board for the study process. That sounding board was a group of stakeholders, that being the airport's board, as well as many other community leaders, political leaders, and the like, that were allowed to review materials as we presented them, and then provide that feedback immediately to us as we proceeded. What that did is it, again, it made a real-time opportunity for us to, to change course as necessary, and to meet the goals and objectives of not only the city, but the community and the FAA as well. So from the beginning, we started this process. I was involved in the last master plan, which was completed in 2008. This process was started in June of 19. We are now basically at the end of summer of '21, so this has taken about two years. And again, we had to take almost a full year's break because of what COVID was doing. Basically, what a master plan is, it's a document that is outlined, and there are rules and processes that we have to follow based upon what the FAA would like as outcomes. That also allows us the ability to develop this document in this process as a business planning tool for your community, because your airport is not just a transportation utility, it is also a business. It does, for example, provide a much-needed fundamental service to the community, but it also generates income in a way that helps pay for itself. So when we, we approach a master plan, we have to look at the actual physical plant and its needs and its capital needs, but we also look at it from how can it also serve the community in itself better in its role as a business? And what a master plan basically tries to do is identify, for the most part, what is happening now, and what is needing to happen over the next 20 years plus to meet both of those roles, the physical plant and the business side of that. What a master plan is not, is a mandatory requirement placed on either yourself as the City of Dubuque, which is the airport's sponsor, or it does not necessarily require that the FAA also participate in any future endeavors at the airport itself. This is simply a plan, a point-in-time plan, which outlines that here, you give the FAA, this is our plan, and you sign it, and it's our plan for the next 20 years or so. And the FAA receives that plan, they'll sign it and say, that's a good plan, we're okay with that plan. And as we move forward, we'll annually talk about capital needs and grant processes as we proceed. The important part is, whatever we do put in this plan, then can become eligible for those federal funding processes down the road. Keep that in mind. As far as the process, it's a three-pronged process. The first, the first prong is what we call the requirements phase, the foundation. This is where we identify what's happening right now, what your needs are. So what is happening in terms of, of important data points? For your airport, again, passengers getting onto airplanes, which are called "emplainments", that's a term I'll use, that's an important factor. Your base aircraft, from a general aviation standpoint, is also a very important demand factor.
Excuse me, sir. Would you mind, you said that you'd like to answer the questions?
Yes, absolutely.
So, briefly, so you're saying that if it's in the plan, and the FAA approves the plan, then it automatically becomes eligible for the 90-plus, or, or not? Or is it still up in the air?
It's still up in the air. It can be eligible if it meets justification and priority rankings. The point of what I was trying to get to is if it's not on the plan, it cannot be funded through grant processes later in time. You will have to then amend your plan to include it, to then even be eligible to be discussed for future grant funding.
Great, thank you. And sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Good question. As far as, again, the first phase, we wanted to identify what the demand factors are, where they look like they're going for the next 20 years, and then put to that a need in terms of facilities. Do you match that need with what you have now, and what you do have to do to then transfer any shortages or, or needs into future capital needs? And the important part with this, part of this process is the forecast is one of only two things the FAA approves. We did receive early approval on this, right about the time COVID hit, is when we submitted these forecasts. Jeff Dietering with the FAA, your planner for this region, did approve them. They were not grandiose in nature, so he was very, very quick to approve, and we believe they're still valid regardless of what happens with COVID. Of course, we had a short time where airline service was suspended here, it is now back. We actually are seeing numbers return much quicker than anyone expected. The FAA originally thought 2024, before previous numbers were hit, we already hit them with some of our peaking periods. And so, so the important part to know here is we did have the first part of that approval, and it is complete. We had our first set of planning meetings, we had a public workshop as well, we then transitioned into Phase Two, which was just one, one chapter of this entire study, which is the alternatives. We looked at a number of different ways to meet the needs that we presented that were needs, how to meet a runway extension option, as we talked about, many different options. How do we meet, again, the business side of this? How do we develop parcels that will allow for additional revenue resources and the like? And we thought it was an important part at this point to step back, have more meetings. We had our, our second technical advisory committee meeting, we then also had another public workshop and moved forward. In June of this year, just a couple months ago, excuse me, we had our final meeting, and in that meeting, that, that included our financial analysis of the plan, which was two, had two pieces to it, one being what is the capital cost of all of these projects, and the second being, does the airport generate enough revenues, and the modeling of that cash flow evaluation to see if it can be paid for over the course of 20-plus years? And that was complete. The second thing in, of this document that the FAA will need to approve is, is what is up there in that, in that brown box, which is your airport layout plan drawings. They're known as the ALP, if you've heard that term before. An ALP is basically that agreement that you put forth to the FAA. It's a drawing, which shows in, again, a CAD format, in a two-dimensional way, this is what we are putting forth as our plan. Anything that is on that drawing can become eligible for federal grant funds down the road. And it then basically becomes a discussion of, is that justified for need? And if the FAA, if you meet the hurdles, whether it be environmental, or financial, or operational, to, 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 again, prove that need, you can then get the federal funding assistance on a 90-10-plus basis, depends on the program. But generally speaking, it's a 90-10-plus program. And so again, this is where we sit today. We had that final meeting, we had another public workshop, and now we're going forth in looking to have this body adopt, approve, or however you would have that done, so that we can finalize the process down the road. And to step back, talk a little bit again about how we communicated with the public. We first had our, our stakeholder meetings. We utilized the internet as our, as our opportunity to spread information easily. We did develop a project website, so anybody with a computer, a phone, any sort of smart device with PDF viewers could have read the same information we were presenting in our TAC meetings. So we were not hiding any of this information from the beginning, it was, it was available to anybody with, with that availability. We had media involved with this throughout, and we had pretty good showings at, at our three public workshops during the process. And I'm going to summarize the master plan again. It's, it's about 200-plus pages, there's a lot of information. But basically, again, I wanted to summarize, this airport does serve basically all kinds of aviation components. Again, you're a commercial service airport, you support American Airlines, and in that, in the charters, you also support UD, which is a very dynamically growing institution, which is fun to watch from our perspective in the industry. Most pilot training prior to COVID was dying across the country. COVID actually brought back a number of people because, in many cases, because there was money available and time. But there's also a need to fill pilot seats in the airlines, and it's lucrative careers, and, and the word is getting out, so that's a great thing. You also support all types of other uses. It's very much an important asset to the National Aviation System, or the NAS. The FAA recognizes that, that's why there's millions of dollars that come to this airport every year in terms of grant funding process. There are about 60,000 aircraft movements and growing because of what's happening at UD right now. And right now, you're having, you're implanting almost 40,000 passengers a year on your airlines. It's definitely an economic engine for not only the city, but the region as a whole. We did an economic benefit study as a part of this, and we found it's about, it's worth about $78 million annually to the, to the region. This represents a summary of, again, a very brief summary of our forecast findings. Looking at your current or base year, which was 2019, about 40,000 emplanned passengers, we show that going to about 52,000 annually by the end of the planning period. As far as the operations of the commercial carriers, we don't see a big jump in the total number, because what we believe is going to happen are the airlines are going to upgauge aircraft. So you're going to start seeing, instead of the 49, 50 passengers, you're going to see more of the 70-passenger airplanes. And in some cases, you may see some 90-seat regional carriers as well by the end of the planning period. So you're going to have bigger airplanes. What you may lose is frequency. So, so you may actually have a bigger plane, but you may actually lose an operation in that switch or trade-off. As far as general aviation goes, you have about 60,000 annual operations there, we're projecting that to increase to about 80,000 annually. Base aircraft, again, it's an important statistic, because the FAA can model its funding after that. You have 78, you're well above their threshold. We project that number can go upwards of 122. And again, that will be largely dependent upon what we do with our development plan. This represents the entirety of that plan. I just cut to the chase to the very end. And as you look through this, it's, there's a lot going on, and I, and I apologize, it's, it's a very detailed drawing. When you look at this, anything that you see in red represents an airfield pavement, whether it be a runway improvement, or a taxiway improvement, or an apron space improvement, those are all new pavements that will serve to move airplanes. Anything that you see in yellow represents a roof line. And so that could be a hangar, it could be an improved space for the terminal building itself, it could be growth at UD, it could be also all along the west side of the runway. As you can see, we proposed an entire new development area on the west side of your primary 1836. There's a lot of pavement that's going to need to be modified to meet new FAA-designed standards. Some of the pavement has aged and is falling apart right now, Taxiway Alpha is being remodeled. And we had a part to play in that and help redesign that, that layout. The functional layout, as it, as it, it was, in a, in a way, not meeting FAA-designed standards, so we helped with the engineering firm that you use as FOTH. They were also as a part of this. We've come together with a plan, which we believe is going to help move airplanes more efficiently, and that includes both the airlines and the general aviation operators, including UD with their run-up operations. We do propose the west-side development. That's going to be a very expensive move, as it's needed to be, but here's, here's the reality of your situation. You have very little room left on your current terminal area. You replaced the terminal with hangars, which was a great idea, and it was a good move to, to help modify revenue resources, again, from something that just sat empty for the most part, to things that are generating revenue and serving your community and the aviation needs that it has. However, you do have a need to develop additional hangar space in the future, and it's going to be, that initial move to the west side may be expensive or costly, but you may find some public-private partnership opportunities to do just that. And so we believe that that will happen in small chunks over time, and, and what we're showing you in our plan will likely be well beyond a 20-year frame, but it shows you the build-out opportunity of the airport's west side. So we also show the opportunity to continue to develop commercial-industrial opportunities, non-aviation development areas near your terminal building, you have plenty of space for that. As long as that space is not needed or required for aviation, and is cut off by roads, the FAA can support that move. And again, it's a great opportunity to provide buffers between the airport, which is in industrial use for the most part, and your community, which is more, more in line with residential use. And any buffer you can have, which we're going to talk about in a moment, is a good thing. And so with that, we do believe that your terminal building, you've done a really good job. You should be commended, it's, it's nationally known, the building has been seen, it's been talked about, and not just in Dubuque, but across the country. We work at airports across the country, and this is one of those benchmarked terminal buildings that is used to provide thoughts about how communities can better provide for their service. And as, as an example, I know that Mason City's looking at something similar, and this is one of those benchmarks that is looked at. So for the most part, the terminal's in great shape. We do show the opportunity to extend your runway if there is a justifier, and this is where I wanted to use the opportunity to explain the difference between eligible and justified. When it comes to eligible, eligible simply means that it, it is something that you may need, that can be funded based upon the strict priorities and, and system set up by the FAA for the grant mechanisms. That doesn't mean they will fund it. What they need is justification in many cases, and the runway's a good example. You don't, you don't receive support financially from the FAA to build it, they will come, and there's a place just 30 miles to the west of here that that's famous for. The FAA doesn't follow that path, unfortunately. But what they will allow for is if you can show a justified need, you have a specific operator or group of operators that have a length need, you can go to them and say, this is our proof, this is what we have, and then they can then get behind it, and you can clear environmental hurdles, you can then get the grants for that, for that project. Speaking of which, we're looking at, in terms of the terminal itself, we're looking at the opportunity to expand the building to allow for a second boarding bridge if necessary in the future, to allow for a narrow-bodied aircraft to, to better be served there, maybe a little more holdroom space, to, to allow for the rental car agencies to expand for some of the parking that may need, need to expand as well. And ultimately, as far as we're looking at here, again, the east-side GA, you have a few spots left. Again, the yellow shows new hangar opportunities, there's not a lot of space left. You definitely can fill that space up in the next 20 years, within the plan's breadth. So that's important to know. Looking down towards UD, they have plenty of opportunity to grow, which is a good thing, because they look like they're going to do just that. They're very healthy, and they're doing a great job. Again, a national-known brand that, that is growing. This is the west side in general. We wanted to point out here that we are planning for the potential for an MRO, which is a maintenance-repair overhaul-type facility, which I could throw out a name, in Amazon. Amazon is, is similarly operating to what Uber and Lyft did previously as, as a company that is coming in and shaking up the industry. They are definitely doing that with cargo, and so they're moving into communities very quickly, rapidly, following their own business model, something we haven't seen since UPS and FedEx settled back basically in the 80s and 90s. So this is exciting to watch happen. However, communities need to be ready for the opportunity. So we worked with staff to come up with ideas, to provide for locations if that were to show up. You have plenty of room to serve the needs of a, I'll name Amazon, but it could be another type Amazon operator that could come in here to provide something like that, cargo or MRO. You have plenty of space. This plan, again, on the west side, would take you well beyond the breadth and scope of our master plan, but just to simply show the build-out situation. And again, this gives you an idea of what that looks like for a more, the southerly extension of runway 36, and what that looks like on the non-aviation side. We do show a couple areas that you could develop for non-aviation purposes, we'd keep that in a, a light commercial-industrial type. We're showing you the area just to the east, which used to have the airport manager's home and some maintenance yard. We're also showing the area which is already somewhat developed for that use, north of the, the original entrance road to the terminal. Plenty of room over there for development opportunities, as well as along Merlin Road and the entrance road to the current terminal. These are, these are things, again, that can be subdivided out, and as you move, you could then generate land leases, which help then bolster the airport's position to pay for its capital needs over time. This is the airport layout plan drawing, or the ALD itself. And this is what we've already submitted into the FAA for their initial review. Right now, it looks like they have no problems with that. We are going through some technical changes to help with engineering issues right now in Taxiway Alpha, but we've already had one review process go through, we're already in the process of the second, so we're well on our way on the finalization. But this is what that drawing looks like, that you will sign once it's approved on this side. I did want to take some time, because I think this body, I'd be remiss if I didn't spend some time on, on ensuring for the long-term health and protection of your airport. Many airports across the country are dying, and they're dying slow deaths, or in some cases, really quick deaths now, because the airports that the community had were not protected from encroachment. And encroachment can come in many different ways, the worst of which would be what we are showing you here in the yellow type use, which is a residential type use. And what we wanted to do is, is spend some time here, knowing that you have some capability of, of zoning and planning around these areas in some of its county, and we understand that as well. But what we have promoted in our planning process is to try to build a partnership to ensure that there's at least a lever, level of buffering that will help ensure the long-term viability of this facility. I can tell you, being, I, I live in Kansas City, the Kansas City International Airport was built in 1970-ish, and it was built specifically and purposefully 30 miles north of town where there was nothing. Its inconvenient location was inconvenient since 1970 and remains inconvenient for the majority of people, except for those that now live right around the airport, and they now have noise problems for an airport that was purposely built in the middle of nowhere. Denver has the same issue right now, and Denver was definitely built in the middle of nowhere for that very purpose. And the reality is, is that you have a tricky, tough issue to deal with. You have landowner rights, and then you have an airport that you own and protect. And not only do you own it, but that grant process, that 90-10 grant that you receive, with it, you, you actually do sign grant assurances, and one of them is such that you will protect this facility. And so we try to ensure that you know what that is, and, and we're asked by the FAA to, to brief you on that. And so anything that you can do to provide a, a buffer between the airport itself and a residential type use, whether it be a school, an actual residence, multi, single, any of those, church, things that bring people together that are going to be noise-sensitive would be a good thing. We generally try to promote open spaces much as possible, but, but understand that's not always capable of doing. If you could develop industrial-commercial areas around as that inner-ring buffer, that is definitely better. You're never going to protect 100%, but the better, especially off ends of runways, when you have, to keep your approaches clear and free of anything that will raise minimums and, and hurt your chances of maintaining your airline service. And this is a better use, description here is, again, most of the yellow represents the opportunity for those areas to go to a single-family residential use. And I can tell you, as a planning person that's been doing this for 27 years, this is concerning to, to see, because it is very proximate, especially when you look off ends of runways. If you can keep the ends of runways clear, and as you're off to the side, again, as far as possible, try to work with landowners to promote compatible land uses. Again, I'm not trying to say that you have to keep it absolutely clear, but just try to promote compatible uses. So I want to finalize and wrap this up by saying, we did put together a financial plan, which included a staging of proposed improvements. Of course, you're not going to have local financial resources to build everything that you need all the time, nor will the FAA have the ability to fund all of what you need every year. And so you will have to do some planning, Todd and his staff, every year go through an ACP, or an Annual Capital Improvement Program process with the FAA, and this is what we are giving them now as the beginning point. From here on out, they will continue to work these processes, these projects, as needs arise, sometimes you shift them around, so again, keep this in mind, this is point-in-time. So right now, we're looking at, in the short term, which generally correlates to the next five years, 17 different projects and about $32 million total project costs, some of which, again, will be paid for through grants in, in the entirety of AIP process, some of that can come out of other types of funding processes, as well as local. For your intermediate term, which is the following five years, this will take us to 10 years from now, we're looking at another, basically another 12 projects and another 32, almost 33 million total dollar cost for capital projects, shown in the blue. And that's where we show the runway extension as a possibility as an example. As far as the long-term, shown in purple here, we're looking at projects which amount to about $87 million worth of investment. And the, the cost there is going to be a sizable local share, more show than grant funding, because if you look at the purple, a lot of that is in that west-side development. And when you look at hangars, most hangars are not eligible for grant funds. And so we're looking more, more of that may come out of private investment, local aircraft owners who want to build hangars, or businesses that want to invest in hangars or other types of facilities at the airport. So that said, we're looking at a total investment, basically in the 100, about $120 million, $130 million over the course of the next 20-plus years for this capital improvement program. Some projects we did propose that are not on there, again, are going to be either extended beyond our plan, or are going to require some level of private funding, so again, they do not go into your capital improvement program. I did talk about your economic benefit. We had Dr. Lee McFeeters, who's the dean of Economic Studies at Arizona State University. He's done over 50 of these for airports across the country, and we look at, and I'm sure you, you understand the economic development model or the benefit model, you look at direct, indirect, and a total overall impact of the airport. And, and just to summarize, we're looking, again, at about $78.5 million in total economic value this airport provides to the local community, and of that includes 711 jobs, of that, again, we're talking about both direct and indirect benefit, which is a very substantial economic engine that, that is available to you in this community, one that should be invested in. As far as next steps, we're looking, again, for this body to, to take this information, and I understand- and I understand that you'll, you'll approve in another session, but we very much thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. We are working on a sidetrack, working through the FAA to get the ALP approved. That is, again, something that has to be done. And once both you and they have approved, you will get the ALP drawing back, and you will each sign it. Once that's done, we will put the draft, or we'll put the final document together, which will include all of that information, and that will then be delivered to you, and this process will be complete. And then, as I mentioned, the remainder will be up to Todd and staff, and you, to follow through with what is in this plan, as well as new things that will definitely arise. If I can tell you, the, the one thing that I know that's, that's for certain, in my 27 years of, of doing this, is change. 9/11 proved that. The Great Recession, secondly, proved that, and now COVID has, tertiary, proved it. There's always going to be something that's going to change, however, the asset remains. So I wanted to finalize by saying thank you, and, and those that were part of our planning process are all listed here. We will also acknowledge the same in our report, to make sure that that is memorialized, and we very much value the support we received from all of these entities. So with that, I'll just simply open up with any questions you may have.
Nice. Yes, thank you very much. It's me again. So briefly, so you mentioned that the FAA approval has begun, the process. Would you say it's more perfunctory, or grueling, or somewhere in between?
No, it's generally speaking, they are very willing to allow for you to, to plan for your airport the way that you would like. Most of their comments are going to come out of a standards development issue or safety issue. We did have some technical comments we've already received and changed. Again, the one thing that we are changing is the design of Taxiway Alpha, so we have to go back to the drawings and change all of those layouts and lines. And so I would say it's, it's frankly fairly close. As soon as we're done with the Alpha, I assume it'll be very quick to, to approve.
Okay, thanks. And the FAA, do they fund any of the open space you're talking about?
The FAA can fund open space if the areas are directly related to a, a specific close-in-related safety area. I'm trying to be very, very cautious here. The FAA does not lay in bank. They assume, as the sponsor, you will be, and, and not only that, you have, you're, you're the only one with the authority. They have no authority federally to come in and, and land use plan. They also don't want to spend millions of dollars buying out property all the way out to the nth degree, so they expect that you do that. What they can do is, if you have areas like your runway protection zone, if you need to own that, they will pay for that. So there, I call them fairly close-in, and, and they can help with that, and they have helped with that in the past, but it's still going to require you to do additional in your land use planning and zoning.
Is it common to have both city and county involved in, in this? Because this looked like a lot of county land here.
Yeah, it is. And, and so what I would say is unique is that Iowa allows for more county planning and zoning than to do most states. Most states, counties do nothing, literally. And so the cities have ETJs, and if they have the ability, they'll do some planning and zoning that way. Many times, there, there is a, a lack of ability to do much at all, and so you run into issues that way as well. You fortunately have the ability to work with them, and so I would say that that's a great opportunity. The partnership is what is necessary. So many times, and, and in the past, communities did not implement these plans, and they became secondary issues, and the planning department had no idea what they were doing was contrary to the health of the airport. And, and so now, we have a much greater digital space. You have GIS mapping. You can do a number of different things. You can do overlay zoning and planning to at least ensure that planning and zoning has a permitting question. For example, should this be done here, maybe pops up when they are asked to approve some sort of land use. You can then say, well, what type of use is it? It's an airport sensitive area type thing.
And lastly, we have this border issue in the landfill very often, and so we try to get as much, you know, border that we can, because we are going to fill that up in the next 100 or 200 years. But do you anticipate that most of this border is just to, to, so that we don't have conflict? Or do you actually think there's going to be that kind of a growth?
Um, you know, everything that we're showing, I think, is a very, very viable potential. You know, aviation is, is a, is a growing industry. It always has. It, it will change. You know, we have self-flying, self-driving, all of that's coming, we know it, but that doesn't change the need for space on an airport. What, what's important is that, from your role, you, you can help control outside the fence. The FAA can control inside the fence. And so anything that you can do to help create that safe space, that when airplanes are flying in, they're not going to run into an issue of an obstruction. And, and the reason that's important is many communities have allowed things to happen, like especially, especially now with solar and wind. Solar with the glare, and wind with the turbine heights and locations, that have negatively influenced airport operations, to where minimums that used to be cat one or half-mile, or now a mile or more, and airlines have to cancel more flights, because they can't get in when it's, when it's going, like tonight, when it's raining, because their minimums have been raised. So instead of leaving Chicago, they're going to sit in Chicago and say, we're just going to spend the night, because we're not going to get into Dubuque tonight. So that's why it's important. And so what that then happens is when the airlines are making tough calls about, you know, adding flights, or, or even staying in communities if their health is, is poor, they're going to look at a community that doesn't protect their airport negatively, and they're going to move their airplane somewhere else. So again, that's a big, big issue to consider.
Great, thank you, and I appreciate that, and these, I appreciate the space considerations. I mean, last time I flew in from Chicago into the local airport, we started decelerating at Makoka, which is 70 miles away.
Right.
And it's like, holy cow, really? So, I mean, a mile is not a big deal to these, these planes. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton.
I kind of have a question. So the FFA will not allow us to change this, once we, what happens if there is some type of disaster at the airport, and you all of a sudden need funding? Say there's a crash of some sorts? Is that like a, an exception to that rule, or how does that work exactly?
That's, that's a good question. Generally, what accidents do is it, is it ensures people like us have jobs for the next 20 years. And I, and I say that tongue-in-cheek, knowing that it's a serious issue, and it is. But the reality is, is what happens with every crash, they're investigated, and what we find is, there is a precipitating factor that could be changed to help promote a safer environment. And so what they do with those accidents, and they go back and then they reevaluate, could, could something have done a, 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 given a, a better opportunity for this not to have occurred? Lexington's crash changed a lot of things, which is much of what we're doing with the pavement changes on the taxiway system, were because of what happened in Lexington with Comair. That, that pilot chose a closed run, or it was closed at the time, unlit GA runway, not long enough, and by the time they realized it, they, they couldn't stop that operation anymore. And so it was determined that because of the layout of the taxiway system, because of the way things were, it promoted that accident, not caused, but promoted. And so what we do in these planning processes is take that, that learning lesson and try to apply it here. So I would say, yes, that does help get the funding. The immediacy of it would be more like Sioux City's accident, where the corn was a factor in the rescue operations, and so the FAA immediately said, we need to get corn back from the runway's environment. Things like that can happen, but yes, they're, they're very sensitive to accident activities. They're motivated ver, very quickly that way.
All right, okay. Thank you. Now, there are questions, and so I guess, thank you, guys. Thank you.
That's it.
Send me our adjournment on this one. I guess we are adjourned.